Okay, well today is our first day of unified bowling practice. And so our kids are out here with their teams. They're working on communication skills. They're working on form and slowing down because we really like to get up there and throw the ball fast. So we're working on just kind of taking our time and figuring out what we need to do. And just having a good time. I mean, that's the whole point of this.
We're bowling.
You are doing a great job in bowling. You guys can come down and cheer up for me.
I was a part of the Southeast Bowling Club last year. And my friend McKenna talked me into going. And then I showed up to one of the meetings. And I just, because I love bowling pretty much, I wanted to help you get into it. Bowling. But I was really interested. And it sounded like a fun environment. And the special ed kids are so fun to be around. And so I thought it would be a good fit for me.
Stay the silver hot. The hot.
The hot.
This, I expect this to be something that everybody can do. It's not just for each kid. It's for everybody. Yeah, something to say, I'm hoping to get a letter in my, in where I'm going. I'm hoping to do, get everything I'm supposed to do so I can do what I need to do to get my letter.
I think it was amazing. It's amazing.
I think expanding communication, because that's one of our biggest pieces that we work on with our students with disabilities. But the other thing is making friends and becoming part of a larger community versus just our special ed department. They're now part of the whole school. And they have friends that they can see in the hallway and interact with.
I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for October 25th, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Present.
Mrs. Danick.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mahew.
Present.
Ms. Mungard.
Here.
Mr. Schulte.
Here.
I would announce that the open meeting act is posted at the back of the room if anyone wants to take a look at that. And we have minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, I would like to recognize Barbara Byer.
Okay. I hope we have Jamie Mapp. Come up. Nice to meet you. This is in the form of a motion. Whereas Jamie Mapp has helped students and families overcome obstacles to academic, emotional, and psychological growth. And whereas Mapp is highly appreciated by her coworkers for her willingness to advocate for the profession and help other school psychologists. And whereas Mapp has made a commitment to teachers, principals, administrators, bus drivers, and parents by demonstrating she cares about the entire educational day of each student. And whereas Mapp has handled her responsibilities with a sense of ethics and professionalism. Now therefore be resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Jamie Mapp for having been honored as the psychologist of the year by the Nebraska School Psychologist Association. Signed by Don Mahew, President of the Lincoln Board of Education, and Steve Joel, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
I prepared just a little spiel. Hopefully I didn't overdo it here. But I quickly realized that when this was presented at the conference, that my comfort zone is definitely with my little people on Goodhue Boulevard versus crowds of adults. But here I go. Good evening. I just wanted to articulate a few things and express my gratitude this evening. I'm humbled to receive the award and feel rather honored. And it takes a village, so it's definitely not all about me. I'm honored to be part of the Lincoln community as I partner frequently with outside resources and community agencies on a daily, as part of my daily work with students and families. Honored to be part of a school district paired with a Board of Education that's relentless in their pursuit. I'm just talking to people. My family's here. This is my three-year-old. This week he'll be three. So, um, honored to be part of the, sorry. Now you lost my train of thought. A school district paired with a school board that's relentless in their student-centered pursuit of producing dynamic adults. Honored to be part of a district-level special education team and cohort of school psychologists that's invested in advocacy that grows our skill set. I'm gonna have to do a behavior intervention here, I think. Okay. Sorry about that. That moves us, sorry, cohort of school psychologists and district-level special education team that has invested in advocacy to grow our skill set beyond a reactive assessment model and to provide comprehensions, comprehensive practice model. This moves us into territory of consultation, mental health intervention, family-school-community collaboration, and multi-tiered systems of support for both academics and social-emotional skills. For nearly all of my career, I've spent my time between two buildings, Park Middle School and McPhee Elementary. It's been an honor to be part of these buildings and amongst their staff, clinicians, students, and communities. Honored that these building-based administrators gave me a chance to provide those aforementioned comprehensive services that tied together building goals and my passions as a school psychologist. Every day for the past seven years, I've gotten to show up in buildings or the collective hall from front-office staff, cafeteria, transportation personnel, and so on, gives their best and all they've got to our kids and scholars to meet them where they are, move them forward, empower them, and embrace them. Ultimately, hoping that supporting them and rising strong enough to recognize our story and providing them plentiful skills to allow them to be able to choose how their story ends. And ultimately honored to work with the scholars that I see on a daily basis, who allow me into their worlds, albeit sometimes not an easy feat, believing in my service and trusting the process that what I do with them and for them is rooted in keeping them safe and healthy in hopes that they can be the best version of themselves. Also to my family, who you just met, my soon-to-be-three-year-old. My parents are here with my six-month-old daughter, and my husband is here as well, who provide me with a support system that allows me to be fully present while I work and do the things that I love. And that is my little tidbit. So thank you very much.
I would second Barb's motion. And then you could have set your son up here. He could have sat with that and watched.
I said, or my six-month-old daughter. Like, she could have said that for me, maybe. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. Next, I would like to recognize Lanny Boswell.
Ursula, would you please meet me at the podium? And I offer this also as a motion. Whereas Ursula Vernon Hansen has helped numerous students overcome obstacles that might inhibit their ability to learn and grow. And whereas Vernon Hansen is appreciated by her families for her commitment to helping their students be prepared and ready to learn in the classroom. And whereas Vernon Hansen is widely recognized by her coworkers in Lincoln Public Schools and around the state as a leader in the field possessing both professionalism and credibility. And whereas Vernon Hansen goes beyond the expected and has a tremendous impact on students and teachers, thereby impacting the entire learning environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Ursula Vernon Hansen for having been awarded the Service to Children Award from the Nebraska School Psychology Association and for her dedication to students and families. Signed by our Board President, Don Mahew, and Steve Joel, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's such an honor to receive the Nebraska School Psychologist Association Service to Children Award. I am so glad to have this opportunity to share this with my family, friends, and colleagues. I'd like to recognize my family now because they have been the ones who have supported me, encouraged me, and inspired me to do this work. And tonight I have with me my dad, Fritz Vernon, my mom, Marsha Vernon, my husband, Craig Hansen, my daughter, Natalie Hansen, my son, Nolan Hansen, my sister-in-law, Megan Hansen, Megan Vernon, and my brother, Terrence Vernon. Thank you. I would also like to thank Jill Timmons, my dear friend and colleague, for nominating me. She has not only been a friend, but a mentor and a teammate. Furthermore, I truly appreciate the leadership of my bosses, Russ Ewing and Brenda Lojardo, for her work and their supporting the growing mental health needs of our students, as well as providing services and staff so our students can achieve academically, socially, emotionally, with the ultimate goal of graduating. It is such an honor to be employed with Lincoln Public Schools and to be recognized for my work. Currently, I am working at Adams, Hill, and Scott Middle Schools with such dedicated staff members. There are so many students in our schools who need social, emotional, and mental health support. And I'm so thankful to be part of a district where school social workers, counselors, nurses, and school psychologists can collaborate to support our students in our schools. Once again, thank you. And thank you for hiring more social workers.
We have a motion on the floor. Matt?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. All right. Next, that brings us to public comment. I do have one blue card here from Rita Bennett. Would you like to come up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahew, Board members, and Dr. Joel, for allowing me this opportunity. I'm Rita Bennett, and I'm serving as President of the Lincoln Education Association. And I'm taking advantage of this opportunity just to highlight something wonderful that happens this time of year. No, it's not Halloween. It's a different kind of harvest season, a harvest of books. Harvest of Books was founded in 1997 by then LEA President Dan Studer, who's also here this evening. And his vision was to develop a program that would encourage children to develop a lifelong love of reading. And that vision became a reality, and the Lincoln Education Association is proud to continue the Harvest of Books. And we are actually, surprisingly, it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but we are celebrating our 20th year of the Harvest of Books. Through the support of our media sponsors, generous discounts provided by area booksellers, and the generosity of the Lincoln community, over 160,000 brand-new books have been provided to Lincoln's first and second graders since the harvest began. And those books are provided to first and second graders in public, private, and parochial schools. These are books that the children get to take home, keep, and share with their families. We wanted to take this opportunity in particular to give special thanks to the LPS Board of Education and to Lincoln Public Schools for supporting our work and our endeavors. Every November, just a couple days before Thanksgiving, we celebrate the Harvest of Books by sharing the excitement with children in their school buildings as they get their books. And the support of Lincoln Public Schools has allowed us to continue building on that excitement every year. While this year's official book drive concluded on October 16th, we are still accepting donations to make sure that every first and second grader gets a book this year. And I'm, we're proudest of the fact that 100% of donations goes to purchase books. Not a penny is used for anything else. Well, the lifelong love of reading extends to all ages. And I'm a teacher, so I brought show and tell. This year's book drive has given us a couple of book titles that should appeal to adults too. In particular, with winter just around the corner, we thought Dr. Joel might appreciate this one, "The Snow Must Go On." And Board members, as you formulate and revise school policy, you might find some good advice in this one. If you ever want to bring an alligator to school, don't. We will again invite Board members and LPS leadership to help us celebrate a successful 20th annual Harvest of Books on November 22nd. And I just again thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to many more years of celebrating reading with kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Wow, I can't believe this program's been going on for 20 years. That's incredible, Dan, not only with your work in the classroom and with the association, but just think of all the lives that you've enriched by getting books in the hands of kids. This is a really neat program. And I know that over the years, we've had a number of Board members who have been very involved too. Kathy, I know you have single-handedly been responsible for a lot of books to this program over the years.
Hundreds.
Hundreds, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Rita, for sharing this.
Thank you so much.
And giving us the opportunity to talk about this publicly a little bit. Kathy?
I know LEA has been really generous in allowing Board members to come with us, come with you on the day that you hand these books out. If you guys get that call, it is the most exciting thing in the world to watch the students get their books. They are, they get to go through them. They're very controlled. It's worse than the day after Halloween with 50 bags of candy because they're that excited.
That's true.
And then they sit down and read to you. And I can't tell you how much fun it is to watch them with a book that they get to actually take home. And then they read it to you, and then they say, "I really get to take it home." It's just, it is a phenomenal day.
It is.
So go, if they call you, go. It's worth every minute.
And you will all get that call. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you, LEA.
Continuing our public comment, is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Annie?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Matt?
I'll second that.
Comments? Kathy?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims and payments or payments to the Nebraska Association of School Boards or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2A as set forth in the agenda material for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form which reflects my intent and my vote on the same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Connie?
Out of abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to Nebraska Association of School Boards or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2A as set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
And Lanny?
For three. Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all payments to the Nebraska Association of School Boards as part of Agenda Item 8.2A as set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Other comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. Next, items for first reading. Item 9.2.1, canned and frozen fruits and vegetables and potatoes. Dr. Standish.
Yes, this is part of our standard process and part of our ordering window for this year. This item did exceed the $500,000 threshold to be on consent, so it does come to you in the two-reading format. And I know that Edith Sumwalt would be happy to answer any detailed questions you might have, but this is part of our routine of outfitting our wonderful school lunch program across the district.
Questions for staff?
I just have one.
Kathy?
If this would have been on the consent agenda, it would have been approved tonight. So the question I have is, is there a necessity for it to be approved earlier?
When I checked, I thought we were okay with the two-reading.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Helpful but not necessary. So it really is.
Well, if my colleagues don't have a problem, I think we have to feed our kids. So I would move to set aside our policy and adopt this item tonight.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Discussion? Matt?
I guess I'd just say that I agree. I mean, it's barely over the limit. And it initially wasn't, and then there was a, the final cost did, so I'm very much in favor of doing this tonight.
Other comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. Next, that brings us to action items. Item 10.2.1, wheelchair school buses. Dr. Standish.
Yes, this is back before you for second reading. These are major purchases, but they are part of our routine budget process, so dollars are set aside for these purchases. And they're before you for approval this meeting. Once again, we have Ryan Robley and Bill McCoy here that can answer any questions we might have.
Barb?
I move approval of 10.2.1, the wheelchair school buses.
Thank you. Annie?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. We probably could have done these together, but next is item 10.2.2, the 84-passenger school buses. Dr. Standish?
Similar. This is a budgeted item, and this is a replacement to our fleet.
Questions? Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.2, the 84-passenger school buses, item number 8738.
Barb?
I second.
Did you have a question?
No.
Other discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mahew.
Yes. Next, that brings us down to informational items and reports. And we have on the agenda tonight, an update from DMC. Let's start with Annie.
I'm just going to hand this over to Dr. Stephen to introduce our colleague here.
Tonight, our consultant, Nate Levinson, is with us, and he's actually been with us all day and spent time with numerous groups. I think he'll give us an update a little bit about that. But I think we felt like it was a really good day, and we have some good concrete steps for our next planning. And so I'll turn it over to Nate for our update.
Good to see you again, Nate. Thanks for joining us.
My pleasure. It's great to be back. What I wanted to do tonight is share with you a 10 to 15-minute to three or four-hour, we'll see where it goes, but we'll lean towards a 10 to 15-minute update as to where we are and where we're going. This is kind of a really exciting moment in the work in that, as you know, almost a year ago, we started on this process of looking at how you serve struggling students. Did awful lot of research, talked to a lot of people, did a lot of sharing, and ultimately presented a number of strengths. Oh, great, thank you very much. A number of strengths, and some really great things are going on in the district, and also a short list of opportunities as part of a continuous improvement process to help struggling students even more so. What makes tonight very exciting is it really officially, at least for me, marks this transition from thinking about what we might want to do to actually doing something. Because ultimately, the point of any kind of study is not to produce a study. It is produce meaningful change for students, and that's what we're embarking on tonight. The work is underway, so it's a, well, I'll give you as a quick update as to where we are and where we're going. And a little bit of attention on how you as a Board can help. So with that, as I mentioned, and I can't say this enough, we are building off of strength. There's a lot of good going on in the district, a lot of strong staff, great dedication, a lot of good programs, and many students being served very well. At the same time, we should be honest with ourselves, we're not serving every student as well as we would. We don't have 100% of our students graduating, not 100% of the students are ready for college career and success. So it is, what do we do to help that remaining group of kids who need something more indifferent? We shared with you, and I won't go through it all tonight, but six opportunities. Three are very much focused on kind of how to improve the academic achievement of students who struggle. Want to remind you that students who struggle, some have IEPs and some do not. This is much broader than special education. Some of the key concepts we talked about was making sure that general education is meeting a large portion of the needs of all students. That students who struggle get extra time to master the material. They get extra time with teachers who know the material and the content well. And that we think through how to do this in a large district, where we don't want one-size-fits-all. Every school should not be identical. And at the same point, there may be certain things that are so important, you want to ensure that every student who struggles, regardless of which school they attend, will receive certain things. We also highlighted three other opportunities. One that, and it's great to see these two great psychologists, school psychologists this evening. Social, emotional, behavioral needs of children are arising everywhere in the country. As a district, you've got great people doing great things, but your principals and teachers told us, the needs are even greater. And I shared with you, this is probably an area where greater investment is needed. We also pointed out that, like so many staff in special education across the country, speech and language pathologists and others, spend an awful lot of time in meetings and paperwork, not because they want to, but because they have to. And there may be an opportunity to streamline that and provide more services for students. And lastly, the role of the school-based special education coordinators. They're asked to do 1,000 things, and having a kind of just a thoughtful discussion with them and others as to what 100 things might be of greatest value, we could really help them be even more productive. So the question is, if those are the opportunities, and I reminded you, you can't do all of them. It'd be nice if you could, but you can't. There's just isn't enough bandwidth, at least not to do all of them first. The process we're going to be leading the district through over the next few years is four major components. The first was this conduct and share the diagnostic. That's done. That's the part we finished. So the next phase, which we're well underway and had great meetings today with the leadership team, with the instructional directors, with elementary and secondary principals, with the special education leadership team as well, and some of you Board members as a subcommittee, is to, we really need to go through a methodical, thoughtful process of where are you going to focus your energies? Because we can't do it all. And to do this in a way that builds momentum for change. Just as I said, you know, the goal wasn't to produce a report. The goal isn't to produce a list. And so part of what we want to do is make sure that we are picking things that have traction and meaning to you all and to the staff and to principals and other stakeholders. We also want to, as we are creating this focus, is creating structures that are going to help guide the work. We will be creating a series of what are called guiding coalitions. These are groups of eight to 15 folks, some central office people, definitely a healthy dose of principals and other stakeholders to help guide this work. And probably a group for each of the major focus areas. And then we'll ask a few people from each of those guiding coalitions to come together in a steering committee to report back to the superintendent. in a steering committee to report back to the superintendent and leadership cabinet to make sure all these parts and pieces connect. And what we're trying to do with this, and this is a really important point, we want to build a structure and a process that is very inclusive and has voices from different stakeholders, and has a really good balance between central office and the site-based schools. And principals are going to be a very important sounding board, a very important reality check on this work, and ultimately very important in implementing this work. When we've got that in place, then we get to actually move into creating very detailed action plans. How are we going to do this? What do you do first? What do you do second? And how are you going to phase it in over time? Let me set expectations low. You cannot do, even with this shorter list, you can't do it in one step. Come next year, start a next school year, you should see some new and improved things in place. Maybe during that year, you'll see some more added. The following year, you'll see some more, and depending on the scope, maybe the year after. So this is going to come in stages, and we want a broad group of folks helping us set those stages. We want to move as quickly as we can, but no quicker than we should. And then lastly, as we get underway, we want to monitor the implementation carefully. And we want to monitor for a few things. We want very quick two-way feedback from the staff. Is this working? Is it making them miserable? Are the things we forgot? We want to know about that in days, in weeks, not months. We want to make sure that the things we're implementing are being implemented at scale, that all the kids who were intended to receive this support are in fact receiving it. And lastly, and most importantly, we want to make sure that it's actually having the intended outcomes. And so we will be building through this year, and as we start next year, ways of monitoring and reporting back on what's working and what's not. Very specifically, and I know you have all of this, and I won't read it all to you, but what are the very immediate next steps? And we've mapped out and started sharing with internal stakeholders all the steps, but the next step, so you see right now, we are working on building the shared understanding, making sure, and I know the superintendent and others has been sharing the report and holding discussion groups with internal stakeholders to make sure they understand, and having met many of them, they really do understand the findings and the rationale behind it. We're also assembling those guiding coalitions so that it is an inclusive process. We're going to move towards, at a minimum, you know, February 2017, we want to be able to come back to you and tell the board and the community, these are the areas that we're focusing, where we're going to prioritize, and to be able to tell you that there is great support and groundswell, grassroots support to move in this direction. We're hoping, but not promising, hoping, but not promising. At that same time, we might be able to share with you what we call a vision of success, so that you all know that when this is fully up and running, which is, you know, a couple years away, we're fully operational, what you should see in place, because that way we will have something to measure against, and if things go exceptionally well, a draft of the implementation plans. Really important note about speed. And I said, you want to go as fast as you can, but no faster than that. And people hate this answer, but I'm always asked, how long will it take? The answer, depends. And what it depends on is how much time do people need to process? How much time do people need to plan? And I think, and I'm an impatient person by birth, but by training, I've become much more patient, because I know you will get to a better place quicker if you give people time to process, people time to plan. And part of DMC's job is to report back to you what we're seeing, and whether we're going too fast or too slow, and part of your job is to do the same. So I can't tell you for sure whether these are the, all of this will be done by February. It will be if it can be, and it won't be if it shouldn't be. It certainly our hope and expectation that as school gears up for next year, you will see some of these key priorities being piloted, but we'll keep you posted on that as we go. I've talked about that. Last thing I want to touch on, and then I'll stick to my timetable, is roles and responsibilities. We all play a part in this, but we play different parts. DMC, we're not the ones leading this effort. This is a district effort, and it's important that the district is, the district leadership says we're doing this because they think it's right, not because DMC told them to do it. We are definitely the guides. We have been down this path many times. We have lots of tools and training and expertise. We will be helping, and we'll be an objective monitor as well. But the district leadership is going to lead this effort, and they're ready, willing, and able. Want to talk a bit about roles for the board. You play an important role as well. First and foremost, to ensure focus and to stay the course. I mean, you're busy, there's lots come up, this is a multi-year effort, you need to keep it on the front burner throughout this process. Provide support for these new approaches through effective communications, we're going to need to communicate a lot throughout this. Raise constructive questions. At some point in this process, the guiding coalitions are going to come to you. Not sure when, and I'm not sure what they're going to ask, but they're going to ask you, they're going to tell you actually, that there are certain policies you have, certain practices, things you have done, or things you have asked, or even things that historically they think you have asked, that are getting in the way of being able to implement this. And there are just many things, as we've even talked to principals this afternoon, they say, but you know, we can't do X, Y, and Z because... And what I shared with them, I'll share with you, there are some things you can't change. Gravity, state and federal law, and we're going to live within those. But there are other things, there are rules you or your predecessors made for a good reason, but they might not be a good reason anymore. And so this process is going to identify any obstacles, and we're going to ask the guiding coalition to come and share those with you, and at some point, we're hoping that you'll help remove the obstacles. And lastly, we want you to be open to adjusting the pace, the scope, and the implementation as needed. This is an iterative process, and we will be honest with how it's going, and hopefully you will be supportive of whether we need to go faster or slower as we go. And last, as I mentioned, the guiding coalition, really important group of stakeholders to champion the effort, to provide honest feedback, to help work through the details. A really important element of the work we're doing, and it's why the guiding coalition is so important, and so important to include building-based staff, is these are system changes. There are a lot of ripple effects, and it's very hard to work at the central office and foresee every ripple and everything we should have thought about before we tried to implement. And we want the guiding coalition to provide as much insight and vision into the things we need to consider, the things we need to have in place, so that when it is time to start doing this, we've really thought through all the parts and pieces and create a systemic solution and a systemic implementation. We will find all the things we forgot, quick enough, but it's so much better to find them before you start implementing, and the guiding coalition plays a great role in that. As I said, lots already underway, sharing, building understanding, meetings with staff, more meetings scheduled tomorrow, guiding coalition being built. We will be meeting and working with teams, checking in every couple weeks through now in February, and look forward to both answering your questions tonight and being able to have the team share with you where the focus is and how we're going to move forward at that point.
Thanks, Nate. Dr. Staven, would you like to add on to that?
You had somebody else with you today. Would you like to introduce?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Who's in here tonight? Yeah, we've added to the DMC team a colleague and friend of mine, Frank Alvarez. Frank just joined DMC and came here at last minute, so we squeezed him in between some other prior commitments. But we asked Frank to join the team. Frank brings a great background, 22 years as a superintendent, former special educator, former principal, former teacher, but he also has spent eight years as a client of DMC implementing these, many of these exact programs in his district. He probably has more experience than anybody on this planet of actually bringing about these kinds of changes. He's done it in two different districts, and so he's also learned a lot about why some things go easy and some things don't, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the team, a lot of experience to be able to share with your team.
I would just say, after sitting through a lot of our different groups today, it was exciting just to hear some of the initial thoughts that are being generated, so I think this will be a really good thing for our district, and I think people are eager to get started on the work.
I agree.
Questions or comments? Lanny?
Not a question, but I did want to thank you for meeting with the Student Learning Committee earlier today, and some of the things that you highlighted to us, I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that the goal of this whole effort is to improve the outcomes for students by aligning our work with best practices, and I think that's an incredible strength that you bring to our district. We have a very high-performing district. As you mentioned, there's lots of things that we should be commended on, but there are opportunities for us to improve, and you can definitely help us do that. I also think it was really important that we all remember that identifying these opportunities, prioritizing these opportunities is not a top-down effort, it's a team effort, and that includes teachers, paras, special education coordinators, building principals, and many, many others. And so that's something that's very familiar to our district, it's something we're going through right now with our strategic planning process, and this is no different to the philosophy that we take on continuous improvement throughout the district. So thank you very much for being here, really appreciate it.
Other comments? Annie?
As the chair of the Student Learning Committee, we actually chose today just to take the whole time to really kind of have a chance to chat with you and delve into where we're at right now. And I think it's really important that it became very clear, I mean, it's something that's always pretty clear, but when we work in a, with as many numbers as we work with, sometimes it's hard to kind of personalize what it is our work is about. And actually, after our meeting today, I had to go and work with a smaller district that had a kindergarten, the class I worked with that had 10 students, and it occurred to me, if I had to decide which one of those students was not going to graduate, how hard that would be. I mean, you couldn't do it. And when we work with 40,000 students, if we don't take the effort to make sure that we are continuing to seek strategies and interventions that improve our outcomes for all of our students, then, you know, we're missing the mark in what we're prepared to We owe our students who are graduating and those who aren't graduating a better chance. As you kind of mentioned, it really is kind of one of our civil rights issues of the day. If civil rights is about equality and about opportunity and about, you know, all those good things we believe in, we must do this. And what I love is that this is very clear in understanding of what steps we need to take, and clear on timeframe. I, like you, I'm the one who said, give me a timeframe, I want to know, but it's kind of good to have the stretch of it. And I just ended with, you know, our folks who work with the kids themselves said it best tonight, the reason we really have to do this, the reason we have to take deep breaths, the reason we have to understand that none of this work is personal, it's all about the greater good for the kids, is because our job is to help all of our students become dynamic adults, all of our students, and become the best versions of themselves. And we cannot continue to let any kid, whether it's in a group of 10 or a group of 40,000, to slide and either not be as well-educated as they could be or not be educated at all.
Other comments?
We have some questions, but they'll be later.
All right, questions coming later. Thanks again for joining us tonight, Nate.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Next, is there an update on the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yes, there is. Very excited to announce that the strategic planning website is now live, so anyone can go to lps.org, click on the upper right portion, and get to the page for the strategic plan. So that will allow them to answer the survey, to answer our guiding questions, to get feedback from our community. It'll allow them to look at the presentation for the strategic plan if they're unable to get to one of the sessions, and it'll also show the schedule of the four open forums, which I'll remind everyone, November 1st at Scott Middle School, November 7th at Goodrich Middle School, November 10th at Lux Middle School, and November 15th at Mount Zion Baptist Church. Those sessions are open to anyone in the community, and there are also a series of other meetings in our school buildings and with other community groups. And I wanted to thank my board colleagues who have indicated their availability, that master schedule calendar should be available. I know there were some technical difficulties. If you're still having trouble accessing that, please let me know or John Neal know, and we'll make sure we get that cleaned up. But there's many, many, many opportunities for us to get in front of the community and help with this process. Also, I also wanted to note on that, that especially for the open forums and for any of these meetings, it's okay to have multiple board members. So if you see an event you want to go to and you see a name there already, don't worry about that, send your name in anyway, we'd love to have you there. And that concludes my report on the strategic planning process.
Thanks, Lanny. A lot of good work being done. Is there any other board committee that wishes to deliver a report? Next, that moves us on to the Career Academy. Is there a Career Academy report?
Nothing from the Career Academy tonight.
There's a new report from Dr. Joel tonight, monthly financial report. Are there any questions for staff? Matt?
I did have a couple of questions on the financial report this month. First of all, I noticed quite a different balance this year compared to last year, and I just wondered, I also noticed a difference in our building fund, and I wondered if that was all, or if there's anything else I should be looking at that might be reflecting that significant balance swing to the tune of $50 million, if I'm looking right. Is that right? Sound about right?
Predominantly, that would be the building fund. We had the bond proceeds, and then we spent down the bond proceeds as construction occurred, keeping in mind that that was also a year where we had the cash balance, so you would expect a little bit of an increase of a balance there. The only other thing that you'll notice is the movement to the federal fund. If you keep in mind during the budget process, we had a significant movement of IDA to the federal fund, so that might look a little bit differently on the financial statements moving forward. But other, I mean, I think the big one is really the spend down of the bond proceeds, which is great news. That means construction projects are moving and things are going well, and lots of compliments to staff on all that hard work.
Yeah. Another, just on page eight, where it's related to the nutrition services, there's a lot of zeros in one line, and I'm just not used to seeing a lot of zeros. Is that, well, it was for last year's money, whereas this year, we've got, you know, some, quite a bit of receipts in there.
And that would be timing differences when receipts were being booked, so that was specifically state and federal receipts, so it would be based when the receipts came in and what month they were booked in. So there would have been a little bit of either lag or early on either side of the month in the previous year.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, moving on, my laptop battery died, so I have asked Connie to take us through the announcements of upcoming events for the board.
Great. October 26th, Chamber State Legislative Forum Breakfast is tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m., Nebraska Club. Also tomorrow, the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools Board Meeting is at 8:15. Actually, it is at Park Middle School, correct, Kathy? October 27th, Strategic Planning Presentation is at 6:30 at Clef Corn PTO. October 28th, Strategic Planning Presentation, 1:30 at Yankee Hills Student Group. November 1, the Leva School liaison meeting, 11:45 Leva Office. November 2, Chamber Coffee, 8 o'clock a.m., Chamber Office. November 8, Board Meeting, 6 o'clock p.m., right back here.
Thank you, Connie. Next, that brings us to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, there is no request for a closed session tonight, no ESU meeting, so we stand adjourned.